So you're looking for the secret that got me there? Some kind of magic ingredient that takes you there? Well, you just keep showing up. You just keep showing up. You just keep showing up. Yeah, you just keep showing up. I bet it isn't what you want to hear from me. No, you just want to find some kind of lucky pill for free. But you just have to keep showing up. You just keep showing up. Yeah, you just keep showing up.
Planning Commission study session to order. And I would like to welcome everybody to the October 10th, 2023 Huntington Beach Planning Commission Study Session. And while the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission. And may be cause for the Chair to interrupt the speaker, such comments will not be consented to or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussions and findings for any matter tonight. And thank you. And at this point, I would like to call on Commissioner Kennedy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand. Thank you.
At this point, we need to do the roll call. So Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Adam, absent. Commissioner Costa-Guillan, absent. Vice Chair Twining?
Here.
Chair Pellman?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
And Commissioner Wood is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up for study session public comments tonight?
We have three people signed up. Please come down to the microphones. Please line up at each microphone. Patricia Tapas, Ann Palmer, and Vanessa Martinez.
Okay. Different than counsel. So this is something new for me. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I'd first like to thank those who have reached out to us regarding the historical properties on the 600 block of Main. Thank you, Jennifer, for your personal phone call today. And Maddie, we appreciate the open dialogue and communication. I've reached out to most of you, and everybody has responded, and I appreciate that. Our goal here tonight is to make the community aware of the zoning changes, not only for our block, but also for the rest of the community who might not understand what these zoning changes mean. There are 141 parcels altogether, and only three examples in the PowerPoint. When we purchased our home, we knew that it was nonconforming. We valued the historic beauty of the house, and we valued the charming street. When this notice came to us, we started making phone calls, reading zoning information, and sharing with people who knew more about this than we did. We are still learning, and those on the Planning Commission are still learning, as when we reached out. There's a lot of things to unpack when you talk about zoning 141 parcels within the city. This kind of started out to be very personal to me, and as I looked more into it, I realized not everybody has a "me" on their street, and somebody who stays vigilant, and somebody who's involved. So I think it's so important that maybe this gets tabled, and we look at this more closely. Three examples, I don't think, is enough. People need to understand what it means for the future of Huntington Beach. People need to understand what it means for the future of their homes. Had this happened with us not knowing, and, you know, I went and wrote on three forums, I knocked on my neighbors' doors, I wasn't sleeping, I was emailing, texting, messaging as much as I could, and at the end of the day, how I would feel if I woke up six months from now and a three-story monstrosity was being built next to me, and me going, well, how did that happen? And, oh, it was voted on. Oh, you didn't get the notice? My neighbors didn't get the notice on the 600 block. And one of my neighbors is here tonight, Tiffany Tina Dubar. She didn't get the notice. I don't know how that happens, or if it's not by certified mail, but there's a lot to unpack here. The 600 block would like the same, sorry. Can I keep going?
Just for, like, a few more seconds, okay?
Okay. The 600 block would like the same zoning as the rest of Main Street. We'd like to be able to do more with our properties, but we are not willing to sacrifice our homes so developers can split our lots and build three-story monstrosities. I think it is fair to ask the public to see the 141 rezoning parcels for transparency. And that's really what I'll have to say, is that everybody deserves to be made aware, and everybody deserves a voice, and not everybody has a crazy person on their street, like me, that looks at everything that's happening within our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next?
Hi, Ann Palmer, and I'm the crazy person on everybody's street, I guess. I keep coming up here saying the same things. I agree with everything Vanessa said. I warned in 2017, when not enough people railed against what the general plan was, and then all the specific plans. It's a lot for just citizens to try to absorb all that information, and then be on top of each and every parcel that is being developed. But it's too late to keep Huntington Beach a beach town like Seal Beach. They've done such a beautiful job of maintaining that low-rise welcoming feeling. But when you get to beyond the third block in Huntington Beach, you see more diversity in the businesses, more local type of businesses, not just the big bars and restaurants, the moneymakers who can afford to be down there. And if we give up that real estate now to residential, which you can always sell residential, I'm not arguing that, and three stories may not seem egregious, but I thought three stories were supposed to start at, like, 8th or 10th Street. I know there's a building there now, but looking at the zoning, I understand how it all happened, but I think it's not too late to right the ship. And so moving forward, we're not going to get more acreage in our downtown area. So if we want an accessible downtown that has some local culture, we have to preserve these areas. And we may have restrictions, and we may have exceptions. I think we have to look at it thoughtfully. So even though it's a well-run city, and this is a well-run department, the human component to this, and the cultural component, and our community, our vision of this city, needs to be sorely considered. And so I think this takes more discussion and more neighborhood involvement across the city, not just one specific plan, not the general plan, but as we move forward. We see this happening over on Warner, and Bolsachica was a big shock. I live near the beach corridor, and I just see the creep coming into my area, and I look at some of these little shops and go, well, you can kiss that goodbye, because, you know, that's going to be 12 stories one day. So I think we don't need to go that route. I think we can develop at least more organically the way that this city should be. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Next?
Thank you, Patricia Papas. I've lived here more than 43 years, I'm a husband, more than 50 years. And there's a few things that I'm thinking about. I'm wondering, and I know you can't answer questions, but where in our processes are we actually putting forth all the projects, all the developments that are to come, three months, six months, one year, two years? Where is all that information that a resident can find easily? Is it listed? Is it posted? I know that there's been a renovation project, so I know all about the permit. I know how to use that whole online process. But I really am wondering, is anybody looking at the big picture? I've met with the mayor and the mayor pro tem about what about beautification in Huntington Beach? The more we build, the more we build these high rises, I was very, very not pleased about the, and it was listed as a convalescent home. That would be, actually, it's more of a senior center, but it's really, last week, when I read that, when I actually watched your meeting, it was first, in the presentation, it was talked about as a convalescent home. I mean, five stories? We're looking, we're just losing the whole face of Huntington Beach, and what Vanessa was talking tonight about the Main Street as well. But who's looking at the big picture? We need to talk about that. And then also, I support the tabling of this project tonight. We need more input, and we need more input. I appreciated you voting on the, no, last week, Commissioner Kennedy, on the project on Bolsachica and Warner. That needs to be looked at. It's, we're just losing what Huntington Beach is by just not looking at the big picture. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, I think at 6 o'clock, there's an open house next door that's going to talk about those changes for the community. Okay? So, anyway, okay, next. And thank you all for your comments. Okay, next on the agenda is our study session item, which is the mapping consistency project. And I believe we have a staff presentation. Is that right? Yes? Okay.
Correct, yes. Madeline Welch, Associate Planner, will give the presentation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's study session item is a zoning map amendment request to amend the current zoning designations of 141 parcels throughout the city in order to bring such parcels into compliance with the general plan. I'm Madeline Welch, the project planner, and following staff's presentation tonight, there will be a map exhibits displayed next door in room B8, and staff will be able to answer any questions. So to begin, the project consists, as I mentioned, of 141 parcels citywide. They currently have nonconforming zoning designations, which do not match their general plan designations. Of those 141 parcels, 25 of them are located within the coastal zone. So because of that, a local coastal program amendment is also included as part of this request. So to provide some background, one of the elements of the city's general plan is the land use element. Within this element, there's a general plan map, so which this map provides a visual component to demonstrate and categorize where the different uses are located and planned for for the future as long-term goals for the city. And with that, the city also has a zoning map, which is used as a tool to implement those land use goals through development standards and identifying the locations of the varying land uses throughout the city as well. So essentially, the zoning map and the general plan map should match in order to reach those long-term goals intended for the city. So with that, there are general plan updates that occur, and land use designations may change, and therefore, designations may become inconsistent. The most recent general plan update was completed in 2017. So Government Code Section 65860C requires that zoning ordinances shall be amended in the event that they become inconsistent with the general plan. As part of that update, designations of parcels may change, and the zoning classifications should have also changed in order to match the new general plan designation. So as such, this amendment is essentially a cleanup in order to bring those parcels into conformance with the current designations. This amendment is prompted not only to bring them into compliance, but also to eliminate any nonconformities. When a property has a zoning classification that doesn't match the general plan designation, nonconformities are created. Nonconforming parcels are therefore restricted on the ability to maintain or approve their property beyond 10%. Most of the subject properties within this project are already developed, and the proposed zone would correspond with the existing use on site. So here's a map of the existing zoning designations outlining the parcels that are included in this amendment. As you can see, they are categorized throughout the city. And then this is the amended zoning map. So I'd like to go through a couple examples of sites that are included in this amendment, the first one being with the six residential properties that are located along Main Street. So currently, these six residential properties are developed as single-family, but they have a current zoning designation of general commercial. So the exhibit to the above, or the north, or the above exhibit is zoned, demonstrates that these parcels are zoned general commercial, and you can see the properties surrounding those six residential sites are zoned RMHA. RMHA is a single-family zoning designation. You can see the diagram below is the existing general plan. The general plan intends for these six sites to be developed, or, yeah, developed as RMH, which is single-family. So as part of this project, this amendment would then change the zoning designations to RMHA, and as you can see, they now would be consistent with the general plan. A second example is Bartlett Park. Bartlett Park is a city-owned park located just behind the Newland Center between Yorktown Avenue and Adams Avenue. Currently, Bartlett Park is zoned for general commercial. The intended classification for parks is OSPR, which is Open Space for Parks and Recreation. This is the zoning designation for parks throughout the city. So as you can see, the existing zoning map shows it as general commercial, and the existing general plan demonstrates it as open space. So this amendment would change the zoning map to open space for parks and recreation to be consistent with the general plan. A third example that we have is a property within, or a couple of properties within the coastal zone. It's the commercial property at the corner of Pacific Coast Highway and Warner Avenue, as well as the fire station along Warner Avenue. So the commercial site along Pacific Coast and Warner is currently zoned general commercial with coastal zone overlay. Any property within the coastal zone is going to have the CZ at the end of it. The fire station number seven is also zoned for general commercial. So here's the existing zoning map again, as you can see, general commercial. However, the intended zoning designation for public service facility, or public safety facilities, such as fire station number seven, should be public semi-public. And then for commercial properties within the coastal zone, we have a zoning designation called CV, which is Commercial Visitor. The Commercial Visitor Zone implements visitors serving commercial uses, which provides visitor-oriented commercial uses. So the zoning amendment would change the zoning classification to match the general plan. And then also, the planning commission public hearing is scheduled for October 24th, 2023, and that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on one second here. Get out of here. Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions? You want to start with Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, thank you, citizen, for showing up. It's important. You're not crazy. It's good to be active. We do not have enough awareness as citizens. We're just inundated with our day-to-day lives, so I commend you guys for showing up. So with that said, just, you know, a couple things, and maybe as the other questions come about, I'll respond to some other things. So when we look at the, what's called on a couple of weeks from now, are we going to be looking at each parcel, or the aggregate of each parcel that's relative to the adjacent properties in voting independently, or is it all or nothing? Is it, we're in for all 142, or we're out on all 142?
They're all, 141 parcels are included in the request.
It's going to be one and done?
That's the, yeah.
Okay. That's a huge problem for me, because there's a lot of them that I would be in agreement with, but if it's one and done, just like the citizen said, don't bundle the charter amendments? Okay, nobody wants to be basically handcuffed to a decision that has so many nuances that you're going to expect me to say yes to everything with no regard for ones that I think are not out of compliance that aren't warranted? So with that said, you may want to rethink that. I don't know how anybody else feels, but for me, that's 100% unacceptable.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes?
So the Planning Commission can recommend properties to come out or make changes, different changes than what are proposed, but the way that this is structured is that currently all of the properties that are listed on the map, they have a general plan that reflects the existing land use. Any changes that the Planning Commission makes, and it is up to the discretion of the Planning Commission, if they choose not to, let's say, make the zoning recommended changes, then we would be also making a choice to keep properties nonconforming, meaning that the property owners are limited in exercising their property rights to improve their property. So I think that's something that the Planning Commission should definitely consider, and we can answer more questions about what that means. But certainly, if there are certain properties that the Planning Commission wants to make a different recommendation, you are, it's at the discretion for you as a body to do that.
Okay, that's fine. Recommendation as a body still may not pass, so it, now, a good recommendation in the opinion of one, that might be representation, a representation of prudent thinking in regards to not being one holistic vote, may not get the approval, so a recommendation may just be run into the ground because the majority doesn't feel that way. So, yeah, is that an option? Yes. If you don't get the answer you want as the person bringing that motion, it's not good. So that would be my answer to that. The next thing is, how do we know that some of these people didn't buy these properties because of that designation? Maybe this is actually a detriment. Perhaps these people on Main Street like the fact that it had a CG zoning, because they protected them in its current form from the mass builds of the residential, number one. And number two, maybe they thought, hey, this is kind of like an upzone money in the bank. Someday, I might demo my own house and put a small little business there. So if they maybe bought under that premise, so we don't know that, I can't get in the minds of that, but that's the first thing that came in my mind, is, wow, I've got a little benefit of an upzone. I can bulldoze my own house and start a nice little business right here. So that, I don't know about that solution, ma'am, regarding making a recommendation and leaving it to a vote. I guess if I made a recommendation and didn't get the outcome I would be looking for, it would force me to vote, contrary to the holistic approach. I don't know if that was a Freudian slip when you said, you know, the future plans is for development, when you referenced the downtown homes, like, as if it's already been cast, that, like, there's somebody in the wings waiting for that? So I don't know if that was maybe a Freudian slip. I don't know.
There's no, just to answer that question, there's no development contemplated with any of these zoning cleanup recommendations. It's simply to reflect the current general plan land use designation, as well as the current use of the sites.
Okay. So there's been no intention, no interest in those properties at all? Is that what you're going to say on the record?
Yeah, we don't have any development proposals for any of the properties that are under consideration.
Okay. My next question is, so now it's up to us to bring these into conforming. You guys just had a general plan, you know, overview in 2017. These were out of conformance then. What happened?
So the process of the general plan is, we, when we start the general plan, as part of it, right, it's a big multi-year project, but part of it is to do a land use survey. So we survey all, there's close to 18,000 parcels in the city. We find out what's actually built on the ground, and then we create a map of that. Then we look at what the general plan land use is. And for the most part, unless there's areas that are by policy areas of the city that the city council says, let's look at these closely, like we did with the RT district along Gothard, right? That's an example. Most of the time, what we'll do is, we'll make sure that the general plan matches what is out on the ground. Then what we do with that, so that was approved at the end of 2017. As an example, the properties on 6th Street were designated for mixed use with a 25 units per acre designation, and then a commercial designation. So they were designated for mixed-use development, retail with residential above. But we determined that all of those properties were single-family residential, which is why then we changed the general plan to single-family residential, to reflect what was on the ground. Other than, again, like I said, there were a couple of opportunity areas that the council specifically wanted to look, us to look at, but other than that, we tried to match the general plan to reflect what was existing uses. After the general plan, you usually do a zoning code cleanup and a zoning map cleanup. We started the zoning map cleanup in 2019, and then COVID hit, and then we put it off to the side, and then we picked it up back up again this year, beginning of this year. It takes a lot of effort, because we have 18,000 parcels, we literally have to comb through all the parcels, pull out specific plans, that sort of thing, but that's how we ended up here today.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine, I guess, but the use and the zoning that you're trying to change specific to the downtown area, or exactly today as it was then, I don't know if there's an epiphany now for some reason, but I don't know, I just find that a little ironic. There was another couple of properties in this batch, and I told myself, although I know the city very well, that I would drive them after this meeting based on what I learned. But there was a couple that you are a buddy in some residential, but they have the open space. Can you pull that up and tell me why we would want to forsake any open space? I don't care if it is next to a residential house.
Yeah, definitely. Let me pull that up. Do you know the address of?
We find out what's actually built on the ground, and then we create a map of that. Then we look at what the general plan land use is. And for the most part, unless there's areas that are by policy areas of the city that the city council says, let's look at these closely, like we did with the RT district along Gothard, right? That's an example. Most of the time, what we'll do is, we'll make sure that the general plan matches what is out on the ground. Then what we do with that, so that was approved at the end of 2017. As an example, the properties on Sixth Street were designated for mixed use with a 25 units per acre designation and then a commercial designation. So they were designated for mixed use development, retail with residential above. But we determined that all of those properties were single-family residential, which is why then we changed the general plan to single-family residential, to reflect what was on the ground. Other than, again, like I said, there were a couple of opportunity areas that the council specifically wanted to look, us to look at, but other than that, we tried to match the general plan to reflect what was existing uses. After the general plan, you usually do a zoning code cleanup and a zoning map cleanup. We started the zoning map cleanup in 2019, and then COVID hit, and then we put it off to the side, and then we picked it up back up again this year, beginning of this year. It takes a lot of effort because, because we have 18,000 parcels, we literally have to comb through all the parcels, pull out specific plans, that sort of thing, but that's how we ended up here today.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine, I guess, but the use and the zoning that you're trying to change specific to the downtown area, or exactly today as it was then, I don't know if there's an epiphany now for some reason, but I don't know, I just find that a little ironic. There was another couple of properties in this batch, and I told myself, although I know the city very well, that I would drive them after this meeting based on what I learned. But there was a couple that you are a buddy in some residential, but they have the open space. Can you pull that up and tell me why we would want to forsake any open space? I don't care if it is next to a residential house.
Yeah, definitely. Let me pull that up. Do you know the address of, or which property?
When I went to print out the, it looked like it was printing linear instead of by the sheet, so no, I'd have to look at the list, but there was a few that were open space. There's not a lot of open space in this zoning change, and there was a few that were being recommended residential, maybe medium density. Let me see if I can pull it up, unless you beat me to it.
While you're looking for it, I think I know there's really only two areas where we're changing existing zoning open space. We are designating a bunch of, capturing a bunch of the city parks that need open space zoning, but there are two areas where the open space zoning, as it's currently shown, is actually mapped incorrectly, so we're clearing that up. One is near Oakview Park and Oakview School. Our, the open space parkland is showing up on the preschool site, when really it's south of that, so we have to clean up that zoning. And then the other one is over by Worthy Park, where it looks like it, the actual city park space is mapped incorrectly. So those two are cleaning up exactly where the open space parkland exists.
Okay, I didn't see those in the notes. Did I overlook that? Was there a description telling me why that that might make sense? I mean, I don't know how I would glean that just by, unless I overlooked something.
Well, it's just shown on the exhibits.
Okay.
I have the list of the parcels up here, if that helps.
Well, I was just saying, it's a little hard to figure out the parcel, the specific parcel we want to pick out because they're, oh, I'm six, I don't want to talk into this thing, but it's hard to pick out the exact property we want because those are, you know, parcel numbers, and we don't know how to look up the parcel numbers.
Okay, well, the first one, sorry, Butch.
Go ahead.
Commissioner, I meant. The first one is 111-372-24. It says it's currently zoned, GP zone is PSRM. You know, it'd be nice, too, if you guys put the legend on each page, but I took a screenshot of it so I could have it, because as soon as you change a page over, and you know, I can't remember all these different things, so it's currently zoned PSRM, which is public semi-public, and what is it? Exist, no, the existing zone is OSPR, and then the recommended new zoning is PSRM.
Yes, that is the Ocean View School District. So school designations are typically the public semi-public. So it would be going to the.
But you want to change it, it says to new zone type PSRM?
Yes.
And what does that mean? Public space?
Public semi-public.
Okay.
That's the, that's the exact one I was just talking about, where the city park on the current zoning map is shown in the wrong location. On the current zoning map, the city park is shown on the preschool site, and the city park, which is south of the school, is shown as PS, when really they should be flipped. So the preschool site should be PS with the RM underlying, and then the city park should show now as OSPR. That's the cleanup that's happening there.
Okay, well, I'm going to have to, we don't need to beat the minutia right now. My biggest concern is you guys want an all or nothing vote. I think that's not wise. I don't know how you guys missed in 2017, the existing thing downtown, which to me is taking somebody's by right zoning when they maybe bought their house, maybe they liked the CG zoning, and now you want to basically change that? And the fact that if they had a prudent Realtor, the Realtor would, should have told them what the zoning was and what the recommendation or limitations were, and if they made a decision purchase, that was their decision then, and it should be honored now, because changing it to a residential zone, do we really need to change it for six houses? I mean, to me, it's ridiculous, but.
Well, actually, to answer that question, any property owner that wants to remain and not in, like basically with a non-conforming status, can do so. We just need something in writing from them to say that they understand what it means to be non-conforming, and that they want to opt out, and any property owner can do that. But another property can't, owner can't do it for another property owner.
Right, and that's the problem. Maybe, maybe the person that says, I want to change that zoning, is affecting the other person that bought that home because of the zoning. And so now that you've got the three-story building next to you, which maybe they bought specifically their understanding that I'll never have to deal with that based on the zoning in place.
Well, the zoning in place that's currently in place allows a 50-foot height limit.
Yeah, on, how wide are those lots?
Depends, but.
No, how wide are they?
Well, they vary. So of the six lots, three are 25 feet wide.
Okay, so you're going to build a 25-foot wide building, 50 feet tall, it's never going to get approved?
Well, I'm just saying what the existing zoning is.
But it's not, I can what if that all day long? It's not real.
Well, that is the real development standard that's in place now. And I guess I want to point out, and there's, there's, from the staff perspective, there's no advocacy here one way or the other. If this doesn't go through, then it doesn't go through. This is, if a property owner doesn't want to have their property rezoned, that's okay, but we just want to make sure that the planning commission understands, basically has the full information for what it means if it doesn't go through. So properties that are non-conforming, meaning their use on the site doesn't match what the zoning is, they're highly limited in what they can do to upgrade their lot. So for instance, a single-family residential property owner that has a commercial zoning, they can't improve their properties beyond 10%.
Understood. How many of those on this list right now fall in that, other than these six? I'm going to have to go back through in detail and look at these lists, and look at the CG, and look at where a CG zone has a house on it.
We can count those up. I don't know if we have that.
I mean, I think it would really be prudent if you guys really just kind of segmented the ones that really could be affected. Some of these are no brainers. It's just, it's just a lateral move, it makes sense, but for example, that scenario, I would like to be able to have a legend right here that says there's not just those six or whatever downtown, but there's another 30 houses that have a CG zone that are limited inherently by that zoning to no more than 10% improvement. I mean, when you go through and look at 140 of these, it just doesn't, it's too much.
Commissioner Kennedy, can I give the other commissioners some time?
Yeah, I mean, is, am I done?
Thank you.
Oh, you can go back. I want to say, I concur with Commissioner Kennedy. I was going to cut to the chase just a tad bit and say, I thought the three examples you gave on our packet were fantastic. It told us everything. There was pictures, there was overlays, we knew exactly what was going on. I came here today saying I'd like 138 more of those to equal 141, but as Commissioner Kennedy just said, there is some no brainers in there. So in my world, I think we need a little bit more detailed package on these zoning cleanups. So that's what I want to say right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Madeline, for the presentation. You did answer my question, Jennifer, regarding if a proper, because I know we went through the housing element, and some property owners were pulling out as they realized that some of their properties were being upzoned. So my question regarding the change in the zoning is if the property owner is wanting to not have their property changed in zoning, they could do so, right?
Yes, they can, as long as they acknowledge that they understand they'll remain non-conforming.
Is there a way that the city could reach out to, I know we sent out notices, and I'm sure they went out to existing tenants and the owners if they rent their property, but maybe reach out to them saying, hey, this is an option? Because I'm sure we just sent a general notice, like, hey, come to this meeting and learn X, Y, and Z about what's going on, but if we send them a packet or saying like, hey, for example, this is, these are your options that you could, do you want your property zoned? Do you not want it zoned? These are the repercussions or non-repercussions? Is there something that we could do in that sense, or no?
We could put that in another notice.
Okay, cool. And then my last question is, I think for Connor, if we don't do anything, are there any legal repercussions from those properties, for example, that fall under the coastal commission or the coastal zone?
So the largest risk we would have would be if a property owner who was in a non-conforming area, they can sue the city to make us pass a zoning amendment, to make it conforming under state law, but we're not under risk from the state or the coastal commission, something like that, where it would be if a property owner decided that they would like to essentially force our hand and make, us make a zoning amendment to make that property conforming.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's it for me for now.
I have a few questions. Number one, I don't understand how it was allowed to be built residential on a commercial-zoned area, because the commercial zone, my understanding, was there first, and then the house came second. Is that right?
Probably not. A lot of these houses are older, so my guess is that the houses were built first, they'd been there, and then the city, in some sort of attempt to push more of a mixed-use environment down Main Street, or I guess up Main Street, changed the general plan and zoning to a mixed-use designation with a commercial zoning. So I think that happened, and then those properties remained single-family, and properties in the surrounding area developed as single-family. And so that plan to create like a mixed-use environment, like you see on the like first four blocks of Main Street, didn't come to fruition.
So with that explanation, wouldn't they have had to have been notified that their zoning is being changed, even though it's a home, being changed to commercial?
At some point, yes.
They were told that?
I'm sure they were. It was changed to commercial probably a few decades ago, a couple of decades ago.
Okay. Then I have a question about the Bartlett Park. Okay, so it's zoned commercial, correct? Okay. But we built a park on it. So how did that happen?
I don't know. Just, a lot of times, the city will zone something, let's say, as the general, general plans are updated every 20 years, and they usually set the land use, I guess, vision for the city. And in some cases, it never happens. Bartlett Park has cultural resources, it also has biological resources, and so maybe at one point, there was maybe a vision to have development go all the way, you know, further back, because it sits behind New Land Center. So maybe the development was supposed to go further back, but it could have been that grading issues, cultural resources, sensitive biological habitat and resources made it cost prohibitive, and so may, or potentially it was the desire of a council in place to preserve that as open space, and so that's how it became a city park, and now we want to make sure that the zoning reflects that.
So with that said, does Measure C come into play here?
Measure C would come into play if there's an actual project in the future that affect, is affected in the city park. It doesn't come into play when you want to zone an existing park as a park.
Okay.
It only comes if you're proposing some sort of development.
Okay. So, and then I am with these two commissioners in that this is, I would like to see it like sectioned off into like parcels, and like you had said, you might put the big maps up here so we could see it. It was very difficult to discern the information in the information that was given to us, at least me as a commissioner. So I would not bring this back as a, you know, as something to vote on, on the 24th. So that's just my feeling, and I think there's three of us that feel that way. And so anybody else have anything to say? Commissioner Kennedy?
Can you make a mo?
It's not voting tonight. We're just, we're just directing staff. Okay, sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off there.
No, it's fine. So I don't want to show up here to vote on it two weeks from now, and then I guess make the motion to continue then, right?
Yeah, you can, I think. Right, Connor?
Yes.
How do we, in advance?
You make a motion to continue to a certain date.
Well, that's what I was going to do, but you said this is a study section.
I thought you were going to vote on something else.
No, no, you interrupted me.
What we could tell staff to do is to come at a later time, not necessarily on the 24th as planned. I don't know if that's, that would be correct, right, Ricky?
So Mr. Ramos?
Ramos. You can give staff that feedback, yes.
Okay.
I have some final thoughts.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yeah, I agree with my commissioner colleagues here. I think we definitely need some more time, and I think more outreach to the property owners, surrounding neighbors, maybe we'd have like similar discussions as what's happening next door, where it's more open and we can, you know, share what the plans and, kind of like what we did with the housing element. I think with the housing element, we have folks come in, share their thoughts, and at the end of the day, we made, well, we haven't made a decision, the council hasn't made a decision, but the planning commission did, so I would be open to that, for sure.
We could do more outreach, but I do want to point out there is a difference between the housing element, which was creating housing opportunities in areas. This zoning cleanup doesn't create additional development opportunities for the properties that are affected. It essentially reflects, for the most part, what's currently out on the site. So I just want to point that out, that it doesn't create additional.
No, I do completely understand that, but I think that just giving the public a little bit more time is appropriate, even if at the end of the day, like you said, it doesn't create additional housing opportunities or density opportunities. I think the public, I would, I would agree that just an additional time would be good.
We're happy to do that.
Perfect, yeah.
Okay, and.
May I ask a question? How does it not create additional housing opportunity when you, you're suggesting taking a lot of CG and turning it into residential? How does that not create a housing opportunity?
The existing development, the existing uses that are out there are already single-family residential. The zoning would place a single-family residential zoning on existing single-family residential properties.
So, following up on that, I think part of the concern is, is that, that there are already properties that have been, I don't know if you call it flipped or whatever, and there are Airbnbs and things like that that are happening with, and I think the homeowners are very concerned that with this, it would allow that to happen there, and it would ultimately change the ambiance of that area. So, but I know that you're working with them on some, to change the designation, is that correct?
Yeah, we have already been in contact with at least one of the property owners on Sixth Street to talk about some of the options that they have.
Good.
So one of the things I think ultimately, as a staff, we won't be able to come back and recommend anything other than making the designations consistent. What we wouldn't want to do is maintain inconsistent zoning and general plan, maintain non-conforming status, just for the purpose of hindering additional improvements on a property, basically depriving someone of their property rights. But there are some planning tools that we can recommend to, to the property owners to help them address their concerns about potential development that, that they want to essentially avoid.
Okay. And I think what's going to happen at 6 o'clock in the other room is you're going to go over that with property owners that are showing up. Okay. So I think the direction of the planning commission is not to bring this back as a action item at the next meeting, and that, will you get with us and tell us? I don't, I think I agree with Commissioner Rodriguez. It may take you more than two weeks to maybe put together a plan.
Yeah, we'll go back, and as a staff, I'll talk, meet with Ricky and Maddie, and we'll talk about a plan to do some more outreach, and then when we're ready, we'll bring it back. There isn't any urgency to this. It is good to get this cleaned up, but there isn't an urgency.
Okay. Unless we get sued, right?
Unless we get sued in the meantime.
Commissioner Twining?
I'm kind of a visual person, so again, I'll go back and say, I really liked your three examples with the pictures and then the map overlays and all that. Oh, excuse me. I'd like to see that for. I'd like to see that for many more properties. I mean, there's 141 minus those six, that leaves 135 out there. There's some no-brainers in there, like Commissioner Kennedy said, but you know, there's some other ones that I would just like to see. I don't think us as a commission should vote on this and approve something that we haven't even seen, you know? Like I say, again, I'm a visual person, so I'd like to see that. I'm totally anti-mess-with-MainStreet, the 600 block, and I was gonna ask, is there some type of designation for historic structures or, you know, preservation of old Huntington Beach? Is there something like that, that maybe they could get that designation on?
So, we have a tool called Neighborhood Conservation. It's never been a tool that's been adopted because... And actually, there's never been a historic designation district adopted for the city because most of the time when we go through this, and there's been, since I've been with the city, at least two attempts, in 2005 and 2006, and then again in 2015 and 2016. But in general, most property owners don't want to impose additional restrictions on their own single-family residential properties. So generally, it's not something that property owners want, and then, that being the case, the city council just doesn't have an appetite to impose additional restrictions on single-family property owners.
Get it.
However, this is a small enough area that potentially, if all six property owners want to have a neighborhood conservation overlay and impose additional restrictions on themselves to maintain, let's say, a lower building height or what have you, then we will help them with that process.
Okay. And then, one... Just one last thing, and I'll shut up. I take you at your word that, you know, we have 141 properties there. I found out about the Sixth Street property... Properties after I saw architectural drawings from a developer for four skinny, you know, high skinnies. And I'm going, "Well, crap, this guy's expecting us to vote tonight and turn that into, you know, residential, a single-family residential, and he's got plans ready to go, four houses." I've seen the architectural drawings, I've seen the cover sheet. I got an email from another Realtor on a commercial property that is on Warner by the railroad tracks that they put up for sale today and said this might get... Tonight, this might get rezoned to residential. This is a hot property. And that was just a little while ago, before I came here. He said, "You don't know about any other development plans for any of these other 135 or so properties there," and I take you at your word for that, but I think we would like to know, especially if we're gonna vote on something that might change a neighborhood that's kind of secret, and, you know, the other neighbors don't know, and there's a guy who's gonna come in there and build stuff. I've got two, you know, two properties that were on our list this time, and so I just want to make sure that there's nobody's hiding the ball there, so that's...
Yeah, we don't... I mean, there might be people that are... That have come to you or however you saw these, but we don't have any development that's been submitted to the city.
Yeah.
On any of those 141 properties?
Correct.
Yeah, I do want to say that that's hard to control too, because we can't control property owners and what their thoughts are or what they want to do. So, at the end of the day, we're at mercy to, again, the general plan, the zoning maps, but we can't force owners to sell if they want to sell or anything like that, so...
All right, so... Sure, Commissioner Rodriguez.
This would be a great learning experience for me, so if staff needs help with anything, I'd be willing to volunteer to help out with outreach or, you know, taking pictures of certain properties and putting them on a PowerPoint presentation, so feel free to reach out, for sure.
If I could make a recommendation, in hearing that some of these... I mean, we talked in six houses over here, did not get noticed. It's one thing with the specific plan for Bolsachica, somebody may have been outside that 500-foot, and they thought they were omitted, but if you've got six or seven homes, and you've got a homeowner that's one of those six, and their neighbor got a notice and they didn't, I don't know how that... How that happens. So what I would recommend is... What I see is the high-value targets is the ones that I was talking about, identifying the homeowners where there's gonna be a zoning change that could have an adverse effect. Identify those and make sure they get the notice, whether it be a doorknock or... Don't rely on the US Postal Service, it's pretty unreliable. But make sure that somebody doesn't come back. I mean, I know Mr. Rodriguez is always asking about lawsuits. If I don't get noticed and everybody else does, that's grounds for a lawsuit in a litigious society. So I would make sure that you guys identify those high-value targets and make sure those people, of all people, get a notice, whether it's hand-delivered. So, that would be my recommendation there.
Okay, thank you. So, staff is going to bring it back. You're gonna work on it, you're gonna let us know when it's gonna be ready to be presented, and if... And I assume there's gonna be another study session to do this, not come back for a vote, okay? Because that's the general consensus, I think, of the Planning Commission. So, at this point, are you guys all okay with that? Commissioner Kennedy? Okay. Okay. All right. So, let's see. We've already had the commissioners make their comments, and since this was the only item on the agenda before we closed the evening, do planning commissioners have any comments to provide? And we'll start with... Let's start with Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair. I do not have any more comments, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Twining?
No comment.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Just a little recap, not really relative to this meeting, but just to be on the record. So in the last meeting, I asked the Building Department how many specific plans have been written by the developers, and some of my colleagues made a statement on the record that it's really commonplace that that happens. Well, it doesn't really happen all that common here. There's 19 plans out there, and four have been written by these developers, which in my opinion is four too many. They were only able to show me the iterations from the city on one, not the other three. So, we're talking about 20% where a builder writes a specific plan is far from the norm, so I just wanted to put that on the record, because I don't like that.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, sorry, something just came up. Since there were some committees that were canceled or committees that are no longer in existence, or like the, you know, some folks are still on the Design Review Board, but I believe my committee is no longer in effect, do I get to be part of another committee? Or is that something that... Oh, okay.
Let me get back to you on that, Commissioner.
Okay.
Okay? And let me get with Mr. Ramos.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But thank you for bringing that up tonight. Thank you. Okay, at this point, no other comments. We're going to adjourn to the next Planning Commission meeting, and it was supposed to be on the 24th. Do you want me to announce that that's October 24th? Do you want me to announce that still?
Well, let's wait to see if we have any other items that we're gonna bring, and then Ricky will let you know.
Okay, so I'm going to say that we're still going to have an item potentially on the 24th, 2023, and it may... I don't know if you want to combine a study session with a regular planning committee, but you'll get back to us, okay? Thank you. And at this point, I'm adjourning the Planning Commission meeting, and before I do the gavel, just want to remind those that are in the audience that you might want to go next door, okay? Thank you.